Good evening, and I'd like to call the meeting to order tonight. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Gavon, would you lead us?
....................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Good evening, and I'd like to call the meeting to order tonight. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Gavon, would you lead us?
...............................................................
We'll start off with presentations by the Public Odd Matters, not on the agenda, but within jurisdiction of the commission. And I have one request to speak, John Sneed.
Good evening, thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is John Sneed, I am with Crown Castle.
Could you check that your microphone's on? Hello?
It's on. I'm here to talk about CUP number 1402, that's the Crown Castle Sneed residence at 1245 Linden Road. The Crown Castle Sneed location can provide very easy access and utility relocation for the cell tower proposal for the Crown Castle. The Crown Castle Sneed location can provide utilities very easily without any issue and no impacts to the Wasafka project. The Crown Castle Sneed location is the best location for concealing the tower from the existing homeowners, which have been here and spoke in front of the commission a couple of different times about their objections to the Hart location. The Crown Castle Sneed location has a signed agreement with the Sneed's on a lease option on the property. The Crown Castle Sneed location also meets all of the city of West Sacramento's wireless policy conditions. The Crown Castle Sneed location meets all of the Yolo County environmental health conditions. Crown Castle also has provided a proof of the gap of coverage by the carriers. In conclusion, the Crown Castle Sneed alternative is the best choice for the relocation of the tower, and we will be returning hopefully for your approval at an upcoming meeting in the near future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sneed. Next, we'll go on to Correspondence and Staff Communications.
Yes, good evening, Chair Perez. We should have a memorandum in front of you this evening from Ms. Allen regarding item number three tonight. If you don't have one, please let us know, we'll provide that to you. And that's all for Correspondence and Staff Communications tonight.
Thank you. Disclosure of Experté Communications, I will start to my left. Commissioner Gavon?
None.
Madam Chair, I've had conversations prior to previous meetings and in these past couple weeks with the applicant for item number three.
Thank you.
Yes, item number three?
I've had conversation with the applicant on item number three in the past.
I've had a conversation the last week with the applicant in item number three.
Thank you. Next up is our Consent Agenda, consideration or approval of the minutes of our August 21st meeting.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of August 21st.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. On to the regular agenda, Public Workshop on the Transit-Oriented Development Strategy Initial Analysis Report for the Washington District.
Yes, Senior Program Manager Katie Yancy with the City's Housing and Community Investment Division will be presenting this item tonight, and she does have a short PowerPoint to help you move through this topic.
I have a short presentation for you related to the initial analysis report, the element of transportation establishing an urban street network. The purpose of this presentation is to provide an overview of the packet that was provided in the staff report and to solicit feedback and comments from the planning commissioners as we proceed. The initial analysis report is a component of a $400,000 community challenge grant for sustainable communities development that was funded by the federal government, housing and urban development. The purpose is to fund smart growth strategies that create compact mixed-use and transit-served infill development. There are two main deliverables associated with this grant that are due by March of 2015, Transit-Oriented Development Strategy and a Complete Communities Strategy. These strategies will serve as a blueprint for updating and amending the Washington specific plan that was adopted in 1996. The work that would be done to prepare the specific plan amendments will commence sometime mid next year. Tonight, I'm going to present the transportation element of the TOD strategy. There are six tasks to this element that were included in the report, and the document is structured that it provides initial findings of deficiencies in the Washington specific plan, initial recommendations done on the work products to fulfill those tasks, and then one final recommendation that reflects a previous presentation to the Planning Commission in the City Council that occurred in May and June related to the West Capital Connection Study. One of the tasks that we had was to identify a new street hierarchy and to establish a functional approach to street order. We also looked to analyze a streetcar route in the Washington neighborhood as a future phase that would connect to the phase that's going to be connecting to the Civic Center and the Bridge District. This is the location of, in blue, of the proposed streetcar route. The areas that are dashed in green, we analyzed as possible approaches. We contrasted the Third and Fifth Street approach, transition areas on both E and F, and then looking at where we would be crossing the railroad tracks, both at Fifth and Third. And as a result of sort of an opportunities and constraints analysis, the area in blue is what we are proposing as the streetcar route, and we will be engineering the cross-sections to accommodate the streetcar route. Our second-order street is what was identified in the Washington specific plan as a third-street retail commercial corridor and riverfront design area, that's in blue. The area that's hatched in red is the existing historic district overlay, so we identified this corridor as our next highest order because we wanted to signal that we understood that the market had been investing in this area and that the specific plan had put a tremendous amount of effort into ensuring that there was commercial and residential integrating together with the high office users on the riverfront, so we wanted to honor that vision that was in the specific plan. Our next-order streets were the east-west connectors that are designed to bring people to the waterfront and integrate the waterfront features into the rest of the neighborhood, including how we are going to be connecting outside of the Washington neighborhood, so you see F Street, all of F Street is circled, and then in a lighter blue shade, Tower Bridge Gateway and West Capitol Avenue are circled. So these three ordered streets were presented to the public in June. We received comments that were generally favorable, that we had captured the essence of where the public thought our priorities should be, and also married that with the existing specific plan. Based on this sort of functional hierarchy, we worked with our consultant to look at priority areas, our priorities for each street, and we identified pedestrian paths that are priorities, transit paths that are priorities, bicycle paths that are priorities based on the 2013 bike, ped, and trail master plan, and then automobile priorities that are based on where we predict trip generators will be, as well as what the existing SECOG trip data says about where high, you know, vehicle auto trips will be coming from. And we created a, what we call, combined-layer street network. This diagram represents each of those priority uses, and this is where we began to identify where do we need to revisit the cross-sections that are in the Washington specific plan, and look at making sure we understand what the trade-offs are. This is important because this is an infill area that has a historic grid. We want to honor the nature and character of this community, as well as the historic trees that are in this community, the historic neighborhood that's in this, the historic structures that are in this community. So we wanted to understand if we have to trade off, say, something like a bike lane or on-street parking, where our priorities were, and so we created cross-sections that are included in the report, using this as our reference tool for understanding what our trade-offs would be if we couldn't accomplish every single priority in a certain area because we didn't want to take out, say, something like a historic structure or the, or like a heritage tree. In addition to the tasks that were associated with analyzing the streetcar route and looking for a functional street hierarchy and developing new cross-sections, we are also looking at re-establishing and solving some of the grid connection issues that are associated with the current configuration of the street grid. You'll see bubbled two areas. The area to the south is West Capitol Avenue, as I mentioned earlier, we presented that, the findings of that report to the Planning Commission in May. The second-street area is due to the C Street Bridge landing, the new bridge that's being proposed to connect over to the rail yards project. That will have impacts to both second-street and will have impacts related to what will happen with the old I Street Bridge, so we're analyzing those areas, and the report contains some of our initial findings. This is the initial recommendation, excuse me, the final recommendation for the property to the south, this is West Capitol Avenue. We are looking to resolve the dual intersection problem on Fifth Street at Tower Bridge Gateway. We're proposing converting the street into a one-way street to allow access to the existing users, at the same time increasing bike, ped connectivity from the Civic Center to the riverfront. We've gone to the City Council and requested authority to pursue a grant for this work. This is just at a schematic, sort of preliminary engineering design level. We'll be returning to the council with some more design work if we're successful in receiving that grant. And then finally, this is our schematic base map. This shows the Paseo concept that was discussed in the West Capitol Avenue Connection Study, the new connections at Sixth and Seventh Streets that are consistent with the Grand Gateway Master Plan, which was approved in 2013, and the West Capitol Connection Study. It shows the areas that may be abandoned or affected in the yellow hatch by the C Street Bridge, and a possible new internal connection to those parcels in gray. Shows the streetcar line, as well as those priority cross-sections that we analyzed that are included in your report as Appendix A. So that concludes my brief overview of the transportation element of the TOD strategy, and I'm available for questions, as is Katie Jacobson, who is the project manager for the overall HUD deliverables, and I welcome your comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our Commissioners have questions?
Oh, we do, apparently. Hi, thank you very much for the presentation, I'm really excited about the whole comprehensive strategy moving forward and the transportation one as well. One question I have is related to, I realize that we're doing a lot of planning for the streetcar, but I'm wondering if there's an opportunity, if you've explored an opportunity to look at running, for example, bus rapid transit on what would be a future streetcar line? Just something, I mean, it could be more of a comment than a question, but I think that there's an opportunity, it would be a low-capital opportunity to kind of, you know, use those sites. Of course, today, we're really focused on the Washington neighborhood, but if we were going to look at a bus rapid transit route, I think that probably some of our commuter lines, I'm thinking 2241 and 39 might be good opportunities. So just question, comment, whatever, take that as you might.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee-Ben?
Sure. That last section you were talking about pursuing the grant, is that regarding the, sorry, I wasn't quite paying attention there, the Union Pacific Railroad Bridge not being imminent? Is that the driver for that, or what was the driver for?
For re-converting the West Capitol Avenue into a one-way Paseo, the driver for that?
Yes.
So there were, at the time that we did the West Capitol Connection Study, there were two drivers, there was imminent improvements, the UP overcrossing the bridge, and then there were issues with the level of service at those two intersections. The improvements to the bridge are no longer pressing, they're no longer timely, they may be necessary if operations at the port change, but the intersection is still failing, the two intersections are still failing, and so we're attempting to find a solution that could work potentially under, if both constraints existed, but is immediately addressing the failing intersection.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I have one comment. Coincidentally, Jim Brewer is sitting in the audience tonight, just happened to look up, and Jim often works with UC Davis students and brings them to the city, and they present ideas as far as planning goes, sometimes it's urban gardens, sometimes it's shopping centers. One student in particular presented something that I thought of would be interesting in one of the concepts of the, of the plan. Specifically, let's see, the goals of the urban street network under the street hierarchy and functional ranking system that supports transit-oriented development. Order number three, to help you, it's page eight. The goal is for high-quality walkway systems from west to east towards the riverfront, and the idea was to include just something very simple like a color scheme or specific benches or lighting, very simple again, to direct pedestrians towards the riverfront. You can just do this as some, something as simple as paint on the street. I thought it was worth mentioning and including.
If you desire, Ms. Jacobson could talk a little bit about the art and park strategy that may give you some insight into where we're going with that, if you're interested this evening, she's here to...
If that's included, sure.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners. A couple weeks ago, we presented to council a park strategy. We were also working over the past year with a consultant, parks design and programming and consultant, and the community, and through a series of meetings have developed a park strategy which went to the council for conceptual approval, and when we did the park strategy, we looked at not just the programming of amenities and the location of parks, but we looked at the circulation element, and we looked at the social conditions in the neighborhood, and we attempted to develop strategies which would address those. So on the east-north connecting, on the east-west connecting streets into the Riverwalk, we're proposing to do public art, and the public art will be used as wayfinding on these key east-west connecting streets. We've already met with an arts group, and we're pursuing a national endowment for the arts grant that will be master planning. The concept for the grant right now is that we'll be working with Sacramento because they have a similar thing planned for Capitol Mall, because there's that open sort of empty green space on the mall, so it's anticipated that we will be working together and master planning this art, and the art includes some large beacons on the Riverwalk itself that will be very, that will be very visible from the freeway and other locations, in addition to then smaller art pieces that will be wayfinding pieces on those streets. So that's, in working with the neighborhood, another component of that is just to create a sense of character and identity for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a comment regarding the artwork. The National Association of Mentally Ill for Yolo County has an annual event where the folks that have mental illness do artwork, and to the extent that we have, you know, concerns with those that have problems, the homeless population, as maybe folding in a campaign to reduce stigma, to take a look at trying to blend their artwork and, you know, providing hope and connecting people to services, I don't know if there's a strategy that could be incorporated with that idea.
I appreciate that comment. That's why we'll be, the National Endowment for the Arts Grant, it's called R-Town, and because we got the HUD sustainable grant, we have extra competitive points to, so we believe that we'll be successful in this $200,000 R-Town grant, or it's a maximum of $200,000, and we'll be master planning and working with various groups, and, but the idea of this art is to tell the story and to work with different stakeholders and including, including those stakeholders, so.
Okay, thank you.
No, that was it for me, thank you.
Commissioner Olson?
No comments, thank you for the presentation.
Commissioner Moore?
I thought the presentation was exciting again. Are we anticipating that we're going to have the light rail in this area right away?
No, we're just doing the preliminary analysis for streetcar, and our initial projections are 10 to 15 years is when it would be feasible.
Yeah, because the streetcar's going to be on the other side if we get it.
This would be our second phase, or potentially third phase, depending upon what happens in the Bridge District.
Okay. And my only comment was the comment I had for you in the beginning, that a number of people from that area feel that when you cut off that West Capitol Avenue connection, that you're cutting them off from the rest of the city. And they still, the people I've talked to over there would still like to see you talk more with the railroad and keep that underpass open down there, because they feel like they're getting cut off, even if you make it only for them to drive into West Capitol. So, I don't know, they still have that comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Guerrero?
I just appreciate the thorough report and like the recommendations that you're taking a look at for, you know, accessways. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. I do have one request to speak, John Freeman.
My name is John Freeman, I live in the Washington District in the Metro Place at Washington Square, which was one of the first developments 10 years ago in that area, and I've also with other, with many other residents in Metro Place and in Washington and Broderick, we all participated in the workshops, the four, five, maybe even six workshops that both Katie's were involved with and other people as well, other city staff people. And I'm here tonight to, representing many residents of Washington and supporting the city's efforts and supporting the complete plan that has been presented here tonight. And I also want to include that on page 15, and there's a map of the Washington specific area, and the area, on this map, it shows a green highlighted area which many of you are probably familiar with, the Riverwalk Park in front of the Ziggurat Building and the Cal Stairs Building. Well, many of the Washington residents, including myself, would like to see, I know this is, it may be difficult, but I just want it on record, would like to see the Riverwalk Park extended and usable into the Washington neighborhood, connecting the current Riverwalk, which ends at I Street Bridge, into the West Sacramento Broderick Boat Ramp, because the way that, the whole area is so beautiful and it's underutilized, and it's underutilized because there's a lot of, let's just say, people living in that area, and there's a lot of overgrown shrubbery trees, all that stuff, and I won't go into it, but it's such a beautiful area that could be utilized, and we should take advantage of it as a city. I mean, yeah, we have Riverwalk, but it, you know, like on the other side in Sacramento, how you have Discovery Park, and you have the Parkway and all of that, well, we need the same thing on the West Sac side so that we attract more people here into West Sacramento. Thank you, and if there's any questions, I guess I'll stay here, but if not, I'll go back to my seat. Thank you again.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you.
If there isn't anything else...
Let the Planning Commission know that after tonight's meeting, we'll take your input with it, and then this item will be going to the City Council, I believe, at their next meeting on the 17th.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Sorry. Can the extension of the Riverwalk be part of this plan? Or is this, is that outside of this network, so to speak?
That is a circulation deficiency that will be clearly noted in all our documentation, and so next year, when we start doing the specific plan amendments, we'll also be doing cost estimating and working with the community and the residents to create a phasing for what's, you know, what improvements are most important for them near term, and we're hearing loud and clear that that's a very important improvement, so I anticipate it'll probably rise to the top in terms of funding and financing, and it would also be grant-eligible as well, so.
Prior to this, I think the, the goal was to get that connection accomplished with the construction of the Indian Heritage Museum, the state park property that's up north, and they, they were going to be responsible for making that connection. That park or that museum doesn't appear to be moving forward, and with that gap there, you do end up with less traffic maybe going north, and similar to other projects, having increased traffic may in fact benefit the riskiness of walking up along the levee near the homeless camps, I'll say it. Charlene, hi.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. Just a quick update on the Indian Heritage Center, it is moving forward. It's been through a hiatus with the elimination of redevelopment, so for two years, we couldn't do any transaction for a variety of reasons. years, we couldn't do any transaction, uh, for a variety of reasons. But they have officially entered escrow. They should be going to the Public Works Board to get their final approval, um, as possibly next month. It didn't make this month, but, um, it looks like they're on schedule to close on the property and take ownership of it, uh, as of, uh, December 2014. So, they, they pretty much need to finish it by December. And then they'll be moving full-on into their next design phase, which is more of the construct, the actual construction design phase.
Would the city still be selling it to the state?
Uh, remember, we were not selling it, we were gifting it to them.
Okay.
And it actually has been approved by the Oversight Board as a transaction, uh, to the state parks, um, for a public park facility. So, it's already cleared all Department of Finance approvals, that's what held it up for, for quite some time. But they are, it is in a formal escrow process and they should have possession of it, the 43 acres. And yes, um, an extension of the Riverwalk with a path and a bike path, albeit not the same, uh, level of what you see in Riverwalk proper, but there is that connectivity, uh, to the north and around the north side of the levee.
Uh, when, when might we see construction?
Uh, their latest schedule is estimating, um, about two to three years. Because again, they have to go through all their permitting, uh, with the core, with the state lands, um, for, for any of the improvements that are on the, the east side of the levee, the waterward side of the levee. So, it does take a couple of years.
That's still better than not happening, so, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Up next, we'll have the, um, item number three. Are we done with comments for staff recommendations?
Just have one quick comment.
I'm sorry.
Regarding, um, the, you know, looking at, at the additional, um, trail there that we are considering where there's a homeless camp, um, I, I do know that the city is, um, taking, is, is taking a proactive effort to address homelessness. And, um, I think to the extent that this is a good time to incorporate that strategy with, um, improving our, our community and, um, and the, you know, looking at extending these areas, um, working those together and identifying solutions as well for those that are probably going to be difficult, um, to displace from their, from their residence or considered residence that, in the camps. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for staff? Thank you for your presentation. Moving on to item number three, public hearing regarding the HARP Wireless Telecommunications Facility Conditional Use Permit.
The Associate Planner Kathy Allen will present this item.
Good evening, Chair Perez and members of the Planning Commission. Uh, the project before you is a conditional use permit application for a wireless telecommunications facility which would be located on a portion of the parcel located at 3199 South River Road. The project was continued from the August 21st Planning Commission hearing to allow staff and the applicant to garner some additional information. As the commission has discussed various items on this project over the last several months and is quite familiar with it, I'll be brief with my remarks regarding the project. Project consists of construction of a hundred and foot, 105-foot-tall monopine and associated ground equipment. The applicant is proposing to utilize an existing barn located on the parcel as a location, uh, for storage of the ground equipment. Access to the facility initially is going to be off of South River Road. However, due to future levee improvements in that area, the access to the site will need to be relocated eventually to Linden Road at a later date. The timing, uh, for the change of access has yet to be determined and would need to be coordinated between the applicant and WASAFCA. All temporary vehicle power and telecommunications access to the site, uh, is what needs to be coordinated, uh, between the applicant and WASAFCA. And at this time, staff cannot, uh, really give further details on this as WASAFCA has not begun the property acquisitions, uh, for the placement of the O&M corridor. Uh, the O&M corridor is what's, uh, going to basically be required for access, uh, to the site because, uh, after that property will eventually end up essentially being a landlocked parcel. And due to the, uh, access considerations, uh, there are several conditions, uh, that staff has placed in the staff report, um, regarding approval of the project that addresses our concerns, uh, with the access issues. Uh, staff is recommending approval of the project at this time. This concludes our presentation. Uh, we would be happy to entertain questions from the commission or if you have questions, uh, at a later time after the applicant who is here in the audience speaks as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff, for Kathy, before I open the public hearing?
Yeah, can I ask a, a question?
Ask her.
There's, the, in the staff report, there's a section about, um, formal commitments with a carrier. Is that something that is required? Is that a policy, a practice that we have, that there's a formal commitment? I just want a little clarity about that.
In, in terms of the commitments, there, there generally is a matter, of course, not given, uh, until after a project is approved. Uh, however, in, in this situation, uh, we are looking for formal commitments, uh, prior to construction of the project and prior to issuance of any building permits.
Thank you.
So, is that something that we can consider in approval? Because in our past discussions, it was my understanding we're very limited in the things that we can consider for approval.
Well, we conditioned the project in such a way that building permits would not be issued unless the applicant, uh, provided us with formal commitments from all the carriers, uh, for the project. And that is essentially because we see this project as a replacement for the existing tower. And so, we're looking for those carriers to move from one tower to the other.
I appreciate that, so I, I want to make sure I understand this. Up to this point, I think what we've been told is, or what I understood is that we, we could not consider anything but the need, right? And location out, so, so now we can't take into account these other issues?
I, I can try to address that. Section I of the city's wireless policy has always required that prior to the issuance of building permits for the project, the applicant must submit a signed letter of intent for at least one co-location on the facility. The city's past practices, um, have been to obtain these signed commitments at the Planning Commission meeting and in advance of the building permit phase. Um, in this event, uh, staff is recommending approval notwithstanding the fact that the applicant does not have any signed commitments at this time, however insisting that this requirement not only be met, but in addition, as Ms. Allen explained, because the purpose of this tower is to replace the existing tower, to also ensure that all of the other carriers on the existing tower commit to relocating to this tower. And the purpose behind that is to reduce the aesthetic impacts in that area as to avoid two or more towers that have, um, one or two carriers on each of them and to do a one-to-one replacement.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and with an applicant like to come up.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name's Rick Hart. This is my attorney, Brian Manning. I've got a, um, slideshow I'd like to start off with and also... First off, um, I'd like to start off with the first one. I think at one of the meetings, it was stated that, uh, you know, we cut off negotiations or there's some miscommunication there. We are expecting a proposal from Crown. So, whichever project goes through, it looks like more than likely it would be a, a Crown Tower. Maybe me and Tim Page won't be heading out for the P Club for a drink, but, uh, I'll still get this, get through on this. The, uh, next slide is kind of taking us back a few years and it's, it's going to come up, uh, in some of the other issues that we have. It's the timing. You can see in this issue, uh, I mean, in this, uh, email that, uh, was dated February 15th, 2007. And we thought, or we were told, and that by March, late March, we would have an answer on our property. I'm just trying to give you an example of the levee project's timing and why I'm a little nervous when you put timelines and that require me to do things based off of what the levee project's doing. Okay? That's all I'm doing. I've taken out the names, I don't, I'm not trying to pick on anybody. I know it's not their fault, they're giving, they were always giving out the best information they could. But that's just how it happened, that's how it continues to happen. Okay? The next one, same type of thing. Um, we were gonna have an answer, uh, in December, and late in December 2009. Now, obviously, we didn't get any answers until early 2013, we got the 65% design. And that's when we found out how much they were taking and how much was going to be left over. So, when we tie things to timing with, when it, when it comes to the levee project, I'm, I'm a little hesitant and that's going to come up in some of the conditions that I'm going to go over. The first one is the one you guys were just talking about, number, condition number five. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant, uh, shall present commitments from all the carriers that are presently located on the existing tower. I feel that, that's extreme. I mean, it's not in the policy and it's, uh, if you go to the next slide, you'll see that, uh, one of the, one of the providers is not going. So, Nextel's not moving to the new tower. You can see that in an email to Kathy Allen. So, I just feel that if we went with the policy that we provided the one carrier, I mean, I mean, you don't want a bunch of towers out there, we're going to have one. The idea is to pick the site that you like the best and that's where they need to go. And if they don't want to go there, then that's their choice. I can't force them there. So, the next one we're gonna go to is, go ahead and click it. Uh, one more, there we go, number 10. The approval will expire six months if the applicant has not obtained final inspection. Okay? That means I need to be almost done. I don't even know, I mean, they're not even putting this thing out to bid until, uh, late of 2015. As far as I know, I think they're starting on the other end, all the way down on the other side and buying up houses starting in that direction. So, I, I can't, I just, I don't understand why this thing has to be so tight. There's no reason we couldn't have the standard policy, which I have written there below, that's your standard CUP policy. If for some reason that WASAFCA thought I was moving slow, they have the authority and wherewithal to take the property and, and do it themselves. If they thought, if for some reason I wasn't moving fast enough. And this is not like a normal situation. This is, this is different. I mean, they, they can come in and, hey, I'm, if I'm gonna hold up their project, they're just gonna take it and they're gonna, they're gonna move it along. They're not gonna wait around for me to twiddle my so, thumbs if I'm not moving fast enough. So, I just, I don't see any reason to have these kind of time limits when, I mean, they keep pushing things back. I mean, we were supposed to have stuff years ago, months ago, it's a constant thing. So, things keep coming up, I don't know what's going to come up, I don't know when they're going to absolutely have to have this thing moved, but they will figure it out. I sat down with them on that Friday after the last meeting. They're, they were very clear, they're fine, they can make the changes, they only need from you if you want it there. If you want it there, they'll make the changes, they'll make it work, they're engineers, they're gonna put it in the, into the project, they'll design it into the project. And to be honest with you, and on a project this size, these changes are nothing. They're nothing.
I'll just, sorry, I'll just add on that, uh, Brian Manning, representing Mr. Hart, I just add on that, that the, the six-month timing, um, and the reason why those slides were up there previously is because we don't know when this project's gonna go forward. Everything related to both cell towers is all tied to, when does WASAFCA tell the current, uh, carriers and the current, uh, tower owners, you have to vacate this property? So, that's the timeframe. So, if that's not within six months, which they've already indicated that it's not going to be, they're looking at spring of 2015 to put it out to bid, um, then this six-month timeframe is unworkable. And it basically just kills this application. So, that's why I think, uh, the two years is appropriate. It was, it's based on the typical policy and conditions and was also the condition that was, uh, included within the, uh, previous staff report for the Crown application that was recommended for approval back in July, so basically we took it from there.
Okay. The next one is number 12. No building permit shall be issued for the project until requirements of access for vehicles and utilities have been addressed to the satisfaction, uh, of the city in West Sacramento, or, uh, and WASAFCA. Um, we would like this replaced with a simpler wording, that future access and power shall be coordinated between the applicant, West Sacramento and Sa, and WASAFCA. They, they may not, they may change the access, you know? They ha, they will provide us access, that's, that's a guarantee, they're going to provide an access to this site. That is, they just can't, there's not, there's no other way. Now, may, they may change it, they may do something different, I don't know. They may come down the O&M corridor, I don't know, but that's, that shouldn't be something that a building permit is, is held on. I mean, they, they're not even gonna go try to get those easements until next year. So, meanwhile, we build it with the existing power, the existing, the existing entrance, and it's fine, it's fine. And then they engineer their, their project around it, it's, it's no, it's just not, not an issue. And I, I just think we're getting too caught up in the weeds on, on, on trying to micromanage WASAFCA and trying to guess on what they're gonna do and how fast they can do it. And I just, it's, it's really hard. When you've been in my situation and it's been seven years, um, we're gonna take your property and we still don't know how much or anything, I mean, it's hard to say, it's, it's hard. I mean, I just, I don't know how long it's gonna take. I don't know when they're, they may move it out another year. Right now, they're saying the earliest is, is this, is end of 2015. I mean, they sent Crown a notice, I think, that they had to be out of here by fall. I mean, but back then, they thought they had an encroachment permit too, so things change. So, uh, it, it just, I don't, I don't, I think if we had simpler language, I think the idea here is if you decide that this is the location, the engineers, they'll figure the rest out, that's their job. You know, they need you to give them where you want it and then they'll take it from there. I met with them, I met with a bunch of them on Friday, I didn't see anybody that seen that this is gonna be a big problem for them, I can tell you that. They asked for a couple of changes to the map and that was it.
And there was, uh, there was email correspondence and telephone correspondence this morning that resulted in a email from Toby Wong, um, where he stated that access will be provided. Providing access to a remainder piece of property, uh, that's not gonna be taken is standard. You're not gonna leave a landlocked property, uh, otherwise it's useless. So, uh, there is email correspondence that I think is in his folder that says-
Yeah.
-we will provide access, um, in the, during construction and in the after condition.
Okay. Uh, next slide. This, this is just to give you an idea here, this is, the, the orange is the O&M corridor, the yellow is the, uh, what they call the Temporary Construction Easement, the TCE. Now, when I met with Toby and the engineers on that Friday, they told me that, uh, we could put the building in the, in the, in the Temporary Construction Easement. Okay? So, by doing that, originally it was- So by doing that, originally, it was not. So you'll notice that, that we're further away now. We're, we were at 99 feet, now we're at 115 feet. Okay? My reasoning to move it when he allowed me was that it, I always figured that the further away, the better. So if we can move it, I moved it. For some reason, staff wants it back. I'm sure they have good reasons, but my only thing is, is I just thought we would add one thing in there, which is add the, add the sentence unless it is approved by West Africa. Because I, I thought, and that's up to you. I mean, I don't have a problem putting it outside the TCE. What's that? Oh, next slide, sorry. This is the, this is the condition, and I just thought we would add that because I sat in a meeting with four engineers, and everybody said, put it in the temporary construction easement. Because that is, they told me that that was not a, that's not in stone, a, that's just merely for convenience, that they're not going to get all they want, and, and so move it in there. They said, you know, but we might have some setbacks. We might have to have a one-hour firewall and some other things that we might have to do if we want to put it there, which is fine. But I thought the best thing for the project was to get it as far away as possible. And realistically, when the construction happens, I believe it'll be even farther away. I believe we almost hit 110, 115 feet on both sides. Okay? I don't know that. I can't draw that, but I, I, I got a feeling that that section next to the barn will be able to move it a little bit further south. I just won't know until we get out there. And I didn't want to throw it on the map. The last one. No building permits shall be issued until plans and access agreements are executed for the roads. I mean, I think we covered that earlier in, in, in one of the earlier conditions. I just, I feel it's unnecessary. Again, you know, you're talking about stuff we have no control over. We know we're going to have access. We know we have access, and we know we're going to have it in the future. I mean, it's, it's that simple. They're just, they just need direction on where you want it. And from them, it's, it's up to them. That's their job, and, and they're good at it. They'll, they were writing all over my maps. They didn't seem to have a big problem with it at all. But they needed direction. They're not going to enter it into their plans and put it out to, to the contractors, put it out on the, on the bids and on the drawings unless they know that that's where you want it. So that's what they're looking for. They're looking for some sort of direction. At least, that's what I got out of the meeting. Did you have any questions?
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Galan? Commissioner Austin?
No, thank you.
While, while he's standing here. It's either Mr. Hart or staff. I, I do have a couple of questions. Thank you for pointing out the conditions and where you have issues. I'm sure we will discuss them thoroughly. I actually thought number five was appropriate, as we already know that one carrier is dropping First question is regarding access. Can you walk me through this one, just a little bit? The, you have access currently.
Yes.
And once they start construction, there will be in the plans an operations and maintenance road.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Why would, why does West Africa have to purchase private property for that O and M road before construction starts to allow access to your property?
Why do they need to purchase the property? They...
They don't need to purchase private property to provide access during construction or in the after condition. At least, that's not in their plans. Now, they might need to at some future point, but that, our indications, and like I said, there's a, there was a, a lot of discussion this morning that ultimately resulted in their statement that there will be access to the property, the remainder property, during and after this project's done. And I think that the how, the where is not within the scope of their plans right now. And that's not atypical, but what is typical is a commitment that we will provide you access. Otherwise, you're left with a piece of property that you can't get to.
I mean, ultimately, I think they want it on the, on the O and M corridor. That would be the ultimate goal. But that doesn't mean there wouldn't be temporary access from another point or some other way while construction's going on. What they're telling us is that they, they will maintain access, and there will be permanent access when it's done. Now, when we went to the meeting, they, we did have it on the O and M quarter. And they do have to negotiate with the state and make all that happen. But they can't start that process until they know from you that that's where you want it. So once you tell them, then they need to go to work. And so at that point, they will provide access. It more than likely would be on the O and M quarter. I didn't really see that they thought that that would be a huge obstacle, but they can't guarantee it on the O and M corridor. So...
And, and my conversations with the attorney for West Africa were, the city and West, or RD 900 and West Africa don't have a problem with it being on the operation and maintenance corridor, but the state will ultimately be the owner of the levy, and they might have a problem. But I think it's important to recognize that the tower being at this property is not the driver behind the necessity of providing access. The driver is property rights. You have to provide them access. So that's, that's the ultimate driver, and that's why they will provide access.
Thank you. I'd like to request the ability to call Mr. Hart back up after the other speakers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Olson?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Guerrero?
You know, I do see some good points raised here on the conditions. The other option that I was thinking was delaying a decision until we have more clarity about some of these points and taking them into consideration further. But, I mean, that could be an option that, you know, we can either accept the conditions as they are now, or delaying the decision and looking into this further, because I think that they're pretty significant. And I think that based on how, you know, the criteria for how these conditions were prepared, they match for, you know, how I, how I would take this into consideration. But just wanted to, you know, ask staff, you know, what your thoughts are about that.
Well, it's, it could be several months before the West Africa plans, you know, solidify in this area, and we know when they will acquire the right-of-way for, that would be in the future O and M corridor. There are many matters that need to be worked out, but they won't be known, you know, next week or next month. And hence, is why we did put some of these conditions on here, recognizing that some of those matters do need to be sorted out between Mr. Hart and West Africa. But those things will not be able to be done anytime, anytime soon, is our, is our understanding. West Africa is planning to acquire the right-of-way for Village Parkway, you know, as their first priority. And so it's really, right now, it's not clear as to when they will acquire other, other forms of right-of-way for the project, but it, you know, it will not be, you know, immediately. So that's partially why we obviously have been struggling, you know, with this project, because there are some of these timing matters and logistical matters that are unknown at this time and can't be resolved at this time. So we have done our best to try to put these conditions on this project to allow it to move forward, but to still provide for opportunity for those matters to try to be resolved and coordinated when more information is known.
It, it appears like these conditions handicap the, the planning of the project and, and those that are coordinating that effort. And I'd like to see some kind of flexibility if a decision has to be made tonight to accommodate that and, you know, not, not make it so onerous for this to be able to move forward, if there's some area that we can make some accommodation based on the recommendations provided.
David, I have a question. I want to make sure I understand this right. Is the lynchpin, the acquisition of the land, in other words, nothing can really get started until the land's acquired?
Well, yeah. What we're, what we're talking about here is an off-site improvement. That's, you know, currently not under the control of West Africa or by Mr. Hart. It's owned by a, a private party who's not, you know, party to this particular application. So even though we all expect and assume that that property will be acquired by West Africa at some point in time, you know, we don't know when that will be.
In, in theory, could, let's say we put a six-month limit on it, and it's not acquired in six months, Mr. Hart could move forward really with anything. Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, under the present-day condition, you know, if you were to build it tomorrow, you know, it can work. And we expect that, you know, in the long-term condition, you know, it can work. It's in this undetermined intermediate period of when the current, current access goes away, and then when is that, you know, how and when is that replaced? And then who, how is that funded? Who improves it? Who maintains it? All those matters, you know, still need to be sorted out. And, you know, West Africa's plans, you know, currently don't provide for an, an access road in this area that's improved fire safe standards and also provides for power and, power and telephone communication either. So ultimately, West Africa would need to amend their plans to include that. But all those, all that needs to be sorted out principally between West Africa and Mr. Hart, but this is not different than many other projects we deal with where we have off-site improvements, you know, that are needed, where the, you know, the rights to do those aren't presently in place of the applicant or the city in this matter. So it really kind of boils, it boils down to principally, you know, that ultimately this project would be served by what's presently is an off-site. So we're trying to finesse that at this point in time, knowing that, expecting that it would be acquired at some point in time from West Africa.
So, and I apologize if you covered this. Let's say, let's say it's not acquired in the next six months. What would be the expectation for Mr. Hart to do in the next six months?
Well, we may, we might need to come back to plan and commission and see about some more time in that scenario.
So is, no matter who the applicant is, is there middle ground to say, instead of saying six months from today, say a certain amount of time from the point that it's acquired? You have to see these things done.
Well, part, part of it is knowing that, you know, the current access is going to change, need to change. We know that's a fact. You know, we don't, and the premise of all this is that the current tower, you know, needs to move, you know, sooner rather than later so that West Africa can come through there. And once West Africa, you know, comes through there, then everything has to change. And it's, it's just unknown if West Africa will have that access provided to replace the current access, you know, when, and how that will be sorted out, at this point in time at least.
The, the idea behind it is, they need, they need the direction from you, and then they'll, the, the changes that he's talking about, you know, the what they wanted in my plans. So I had to throw in those power lines that run down there, the temporary and the permanent, and the undergrounding. Those are the changes that they wanted in there. Now, if you, if you approve it, then, then they go in and start working on it and putting it into the plans. It goes to, it's going to be part of the bid. It's going to be part of the project. It's not part of the project because you guys haven't said you wanted it there. Because that's what they're looking for. They're looking for a direction from you to say, okay, this is the site we want it on. And then they told me that there's, they're, you know, in the meeting, that if Crown was the tenant, there'd be relocation. Some of this stuff would be covered by relocation, and then we'd just work it out together. It's not, it's not rocket science, but it's basically, where do you want it? If you want it on this site, then the engineers will figure it out. And that's, that's how I came out of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Could I make a comment on that? And I, I kind of touched on this the other day when I talked to David. And I, you know, we heard from Mr. Rusich with RD 900, and Mr. Denton, who was the chairman of the flood control when they were sitting in our audience a few months back. And we didn't talk about electrical, but we talked about access. And they go, we have to provide some sort of access, period, if we take that property. But they never put it down as to where it would be or how you would gather it. And my, I guess my comment goes back to what everybody else is saying, is if they don't get moving real quick, how would we ever accomplish anything or 75% being done in six months? That just seems awfully tight. I've never seen anything this tight before, David. And I, I, I'm of the same opinion. I mean, you never leave anybody landlocked. I mean, I think we've talked about it before. We know there's something coming. It's just where is it going to be? And is it really important to know where the road's going to be in the grand scheme of it?
It's, it's, it's really the, you know, fundamental thing here in our fire department is requiring, you know, they provide their access to all weather standards, you know, the 20-feet-wide, 13-foot-six clear, all of that, just like they would to any other project. So it's partially why we've been struggling with this, because we don't know exactly how that's going to be provided for, you know, in the future, since we're dealing with, you know, what's presently would be an off-site condition. You know, everyone is assuming, and it's, seems to be a logical assumption, that the O and M corridor, you know, would be how that would be provided. But, you know, as, you know, West Africa stated in their communications to Mr. Hart, you know, this morning, is that, you know, at this point in time at least, you know, since the state would be the ultimate title holder of that land, you know, they don't know if the state will even allow it, you know, when, once it becomes their property.
But you can't leave anybody's property landlocked, can you?
Well, that's partial, that's, that's why West Africa long has planned, had, had planned to acquire this entire property because of it potentially otherwise leaving an uneconomic remainder. Now, if that becomes a partial acquisition, then they'll need to work that out. But that is between the property owner and West Africa.
And, and taking that thing to the fullest extent, obviously, Mr. Hart couldn't start building on it until they do something, correct?
Well, we are, we are recommending some conditions in here, specifically, conditions 12 and 15, and we'll talk about those, you know, later after the public hearing, that, you know, these matters need to be sorted out further, you know, with West Africa. Because right now, the plan does require West Africa's board to actually approve changes to their, the plans that they just approved at their meeting last month.
Okay. But, I mean, we're not going to do this in six months. That's my big concern. I mean, how do you think, how do you think this is going to be done in six months? I guess that's my question. If you feel he can get all this done and build 75% of the tower in six months, how do you feel that's going to happen?
Well, under present-day conditions, you know, the site does have access to, for both roadways, and importantly, when we mention access, it's important to consider access for utilities as, as well, for a facility, you know, of this nature. So under present condition, there's nothing that would prohibit Mr. Hart from proceeding on the project now.
What?
Because the site, the site is there and has access to, to what it needs under, under current conditions. What we're looking for is some further time to, to sort out how that access will be replaced, since we know the present access is going to go away at some point in time.
So he could be, he could be approved for temporary access now? Is that what you're, I'm not sure what you're saying.
Absolutely. We would expect that, you know, the project would be served from South River Road, you know, initially.
Okay.
And, but that we know that eventually, West Africa does plan to acquire that property, so that access would need to be replaced through some other means.
I, I just have a hard time believing that West Africa would leave him stranded and not make him whole if they took the rest of it, or when they take the rest of his property. That's, I mean, there goes the 12, 13, and 15 in this, in this list of conditions. I mean, it just, it just seems completely unreasonable to me that they would not work him into their project plan.
I think there might be a condition that we could work out regarding, say, an access agreement, that it doesn't include maybe the word requirement. But I'm not sure. We'll have to talk with city staff on whether or not there, there is a potential to even get something called an access agreement to include temporary access in their interim.
Yeah, maybe like a MOU or something like that? Something non...
We have, we have the temporary access. I mean, the problem is, is there'd be no way that you could start building tomorrow because 15 would kill it, because you're not going to get those executed access agreements. They're not even going to go to try to get them until the middle of next year. And that's probably the earliest that they're going to try to get those. So, I mean, it'd be impossible, because it says you can't even get a building permit until you have them. That's why I'm saying, it, it, it makes it impossible. The way the conditions are written, it's physically impossible. They're not going to go get those agreements. All they're, all they're saying is that they'll provide the access, more than likely on the O and M quarter. They had, they had me raise the standard of the O and M quarter and put in that turnaround for that very reason. That's where they feel more than likely it'll go, but they don't, they don't, they can't guarantee it. But they guarantee access, and more than likely, that's where it's going to be. They had me raise it to a fire rating. They had me put in that turnaround on the property and run the underground, and that was pretty much it.
I, I'd like to add that my, a majority of my work is in eminent domain. And how I've generally seen it work, when you're dealing with access to a remainder property, it's done one of two ways. Either the, there's a reservation of access in the legal description saying, we're going
Either the, there's a reservation of access in the legal description saying, we're going to take XYZ property but reserving access to the landowner on this piece, portion of the property, and that's drawn into the maps. Or the other alternative, that first alternative was done in the Safka project. The other alternative is to have an access agreement easement between the landowner and the legislative body of, in this case, it would be West Safka. So there would be an access easement written up, signed by everybody, and then recorded. And that would be your basis for access. So it's one of two ways. So it happens all the time. It's just at this point in time, given where these folks are at on their planning process, it isn't known which route they're going to take and what the language is going to be. But they, it's absolutely clear they will provide access. And that access has to be sufficient for fire because it could ultimately be used as a house if this cell tower is not approved. So it has to be provided and it has to be, meet all the standards of a general access requirements. Otherwise, they're looking at a piece of property that is, again, landlocked.
And again, they're looking to you to decide where you want it. It's, if this is your location, if you like this project better, then let them do what they're good at and they'll take care of the rest. And that's what they're for. You're here to decide which project you like better, and they're there to take care of all this stuff because they're, I mean, they were drawing all over the plans. They knew what they were doing. They knew where their problems might be. They didn't seem to be overwhelmed by anything. They did, they just can't guarantee anything. And the guarantees aren't going to come. They're not even, it's just too early. They may not even want it down. They can decide by this, doing it this way, they get more control of the situation. If, they know when the towers need to come down. They know when the new ones need to go up. They have more control over the situation. They can keep the costs down. They're, you know, if they're going to be relocating somebody, they can minimize those costs. Especially when you do this little amount of construction in an overall, you know, construction project the size of this. I mean, it wouldn't even be noticed by the contractor, you know? So it could be a great way for them to save money. So.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hart.
All right, thank you.
I have a few requests to speak. First one is Tim Page.
Good evening, everyone. I know my time is short, so I'm going to run through this as quick as I can. Kathy, can you bring up A7, the site plan in the staff report, please, on the projector? Page two of the staff report lists the parcel zones as RRA and section 17.22.021 of the zoning code defines the RRA zone as, and I won't read the whole thing, but it says "for rural family homes and limited agricultural uses." The minimum lot size for an RRA is one acre, and we can see that the proposed lot is only 0.8 acres. Condition seven would further reduce the size of the parcel with the increase in width of the fire access road. Getting back to the site plan, the fire access turnaround is not dimensioned to show the 70-foot required depth or the 20-foot required width. The parcel does not meet the definition of an RRA-zoned property. The proposed size of the parcel doesn't meet the definition of an RRA-zone parcel. This CUP appears to be a subdivision of land without going through a lotline adjustment process to be approved by the zoning administrator. I would think that a lotline adjustment procedure must be made prior to the CUP approval to see if, in fact, the parcel conforms with section 16.04.040 of the municipal code. Other issues with the site plan, the setback requirements in the RRA zone are front 20 feet, side 10, rear 20, and the garage must be 20 feet to the property. Not only is there no front setback shown on the proposed property line, the proposed building encroaches on the property line. We can see no setback dimensions from the proposed property line to the proposed tower. We'd like to see some consistency with the setback requirements. Page one of the staff report, we can see recommends approval, but page seven recommends denial. So which option are we recommending here? Page three of the staff report's response to questions raised by the commission at the July 17 hearing. The current wireless policy defines a wireless telecommunications facility as a facility that transmits and receives signals for the purpose of transmitting digital communication. And I see I'm running out of time, so I'll just go to my summary. The application doesn't meet the definition of a wireless telecommunications facility. The parcel doesn't meet the zoning requirements. This CUP gives tacit approval of a land vision. The site plan doesn't meet the setback requirements of the RRA zone. The application plagiarized materials supplied by a competitor who actually applied for the same entitlement. There's no approval from Yolo County Environmental Health. There's no arborist report. There won't be any access and power if you build the tower first and then the levy work's done. Those two things go away. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ernie Turpin? Thank you. John Sneed?
Thank you. I have an awful lot to cover, so I have a handout for you, if that's okay.
Thank you for this opportunity once again to speak. At one of the previous meetings, I believe it was Commissioner Leibig that brought up the point about this could potentially end up being a spec tower if you approve it. And as you look at everything right now, we have no carriers, we have no commitment letters, there's no commitment from any tower company. You just had Crown Castle speak. They have no agreement with this applicant. You may not have an agreement if this spec tower gets approved. It may end up being just that, a spec tower. And before, when we approved towers here in the city of West Sacramento, we required that the applicant have, as Mr. Gavin questioned, had that application showing that he had carriers up front. Why are we looking to make an exception for this applicant? Coverage maps, and let's talk about coverage maps. It's part of the written telecommunications policy for the city that you have to provide coverage maps. Since the last meeting where staff recommended denial and now they're recommending possibly adoption, all you received was a copy of another applicant's maps for coverage. That doesn't appear to be demonstrated proof of coverage. As we know, no matter how you try to spin this project, I don't even need to use my arguments for this project. The applicant and his attorney pretty much covered all those. There are huge problems associated with access utilities. No matter how you spin this, there's a letter from West Safka showing potential issues, and I attached that to my letter that went out, all the different issues with constructing, trying to constructing the tower on the Hart property ahead of time and then coming along and trying to build an easement when he still needs utilities. So let's get into the staff report a little bit because I will run out of time. Some of the findings. Finding number three talked about the integrity of the location and not being, you know, the character of the neighborhood not being impacted. If this ends up being a spec tower, which is certainly a possibility, you cannot possibly make that finding. Going on to item number five about adequate utilities and access roads, it's easy to stand here and tell you that, yes, I've talked to West Safka and yes, I'll get this, but we have no access easements, he has no road easements. So I don't know how you can make the access and utilities findings for number five in addition. Let's go down to the conditions of approval. The applicant shall comply with all requirements of other agencies. Well, think about this. I mean, I don't know why this hasn't been brought up to the commissioners yet, but we're talking about leaving utilities on a levy. I mean, you could be potentially looking at a 401, a 402. You could have to get a possible permit from the Central Valley Flood Board. I don't know, do we know for sure that West Safka is going to do this for a set aside project that's not part of their project? If you have to get a 401 or a 402 or an environmental permit from the Central Valley Flood Board, they really have strict requirements on any piping in the levis and stuff at this time. You have my other 15 questions on the project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sneed. I have no other requests to speak, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
I just would like to be able to reopen it if-
Right, if we need to speak to the applicant, correct. Should I start on my right? Questions, comments for staff, or recommendations? Commissioner Guerrero?
I'm looking at the staff recommendations and conditions of approval to address some of the concerns that I've been hearing in public comment. I do think that if we can modify them, if possible, if there's any flexibility, I'm still seeking from staff something to help address that, the concerns raised by the applicant.
I do have an idea that perhaps we can, you know, short circuit a little bit of this and get to, get down the path a little further here tonight. You know, some of the conditions we placed on here, specifically numbers 12, 13, and 15, were conditions that we thought were warranted, but they really are largely a belt and suspenders, you know, kind of approach. You know, these kind of matters would be addressed as part of a normal review of a building permit application, you know, anyway. And so the commission, if they wanted to, you know, to simplify this, could even strike conditions 12, 13, and 15. And then we heard some, also some additional commentary regarding the timing and the six months condition. We placed that on there as we were getting the staff report together late last Thursday as this was still sort of moving around, based on what we understood to be West Safka and Crown's relocation, you know, schedule and plan. The commission certainly could go for a longer period than the initial six months if the commission, you know, wished to do so. So with those options out there, perhaps that might help the commission with some of the discussion we've had this evening.
That's very helpful, thank you. And also on number 16, condition number 16, any utility undergrounding shall be the responsibility of the applicant. Does that include any costs associated with that?
Yes.
Should we specify that?
Certainly could add on to that to make it more explicit if the commission preferred to do so.
Okay. That's something I'd like to have considered. I'm done with my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore?
David, I guess to just take 16 one more step, is that if somebody was to request it to be undergrounded? Because in rural areas, it's rarely ever undergrounded out there.
Yeah, it's our understanding that overhead facilities would not be permitted in the O and M corridor.
Highly possible, yeah. I didn't think of it that way. I was going to just try and take us down. You know, I listened, and I mean, knowing that we'll have another one of these coming before us in a couple of weeks, you know, the same kind of concern I would have with any of these things is if, they don't need to move the facility for a year or two, they may not move real quick, and you give somebody a six-month time limit, I think that's awfully short for anybody because nobody can be 75% built in six months. I can't imagine that, anyway. The one we had built out there on Jefferson Boulevard probably took the better part of a year and a half to get up in the air. So, you know, I am very concerned about that six-month one. I know you said you'd like to talk about it further. I, you know, I heard comments like, have we heard from the county on the septic and the well? And can you tell me what those comments were for the septic and the well?
I did have a verbal conversation with them. They did not comment in writing on the septic system because they were under the assumption when the levy improvements are done, the house will be removed, the septic system will have to be decommissioned and removed. And actually, looking at the plans, it looks like that where the septic system sits today, the O and M corridor actually runs through the existing location of it. So it's definitely going to be removed. And they looked at it from the standpoint of since it's not going to be remaining there, that they didn't comment on it.
Okay, the septic probably makes sense. The well may or may not be able to remain?
It's been our understanding that the well will be remaining on-site.
Because it's far enough out?
Yes.
Okay. What about the tree issues? Have we got issues with trees where this site is being built?
One of the conditions does address the trees. We have conditioned it so that the applicant would be required to obtain an arborist report regarding the health and size of the trees prior to removal of any trees on the site. And that was suggested from our urban forest manager.
Yeah, we received the plans in your packet Thursday afternoon as the staff report was being put together. And so at least as of this drafting, really nobody was able to go over them in any great detail. But at least the way that, at least the way they appear on the surface is that we can be avoiding the majority of trees on-site. But we would like the opportunity to be able to look at that a little more closely once we have more detailed plans at the construction phase.
How do we resolve that, David? Wait until the application comes?
Well, the city's tree protection ordinance is very specific about which trees are protected and which ones are not and what the mitigation, you know, is for any removal of any protected trees. And so it's meant to be applied in a, you know, very, you know, straightforward manner, and we consider compliance with it to be satisfactory.
Okay. I guess my next question deals with where the tower and the barn are set and the distance to the nearest properties. Do we have a rough idea of how far that? I'm trying to read these maps and I get the general gist of it, but I'm not sure that I'm right.
Well, after we had our conversation with you yesterday on the phone, we did go back on the plans and we scaled everything. We looked at the three residences that are all located to the north of the property. The three residences vary in distance from the existing tower location, about 220 feet to 260 feet. And so that's where they're located at.
Is that the property line or is that the residence?
That's from the tower location to the nearest portion of the residence to the tower.
Okay. What about to the property lines? Are we-
The property line, the tower at its closest location is at about 100 feet to the closest area on the north.
There's 100 feet separation to the nearest property line?
Yes.
Okay.
Near existing property lines.
Okay. I guess my, my other comment came from Mr. Page, and he was asking about the setbacks?
Yeah, well, what's happening here-
Do we have setbacks against the levy at all? I'm just curious.
Well, setbacks are measured from property lines. And presently, we're, presently, what is there is a 9.4 acre property. And so we're sort of looking at it in its future condition where we do expect there to be a new property line that would result from the West Safka acquisition of the property. But presently, you know, we are, you know, this is a very large property in this area. So they are, you know, the tower is shown on or adjacent to what is, what we know to be a potential future property line- be a potential future property line, you know, at this point in time. We do think that is a pretty solid line, but, you know, it is subject to some revision. But that line does not exist currently, and may not exist for some period of time.
Is he right on the property line? Is that where the tower would be, or where the levy is going to be?
Well, as this particular drawing shows, and I'm looking at sheet A2 of the plan set, and that's part of your plans tonight, what's, what we know to, what we expect today to be the future property line, the equipment building is shown right on the edge of that future property line. And the tower is, looks like it's dimensioned here at approximately eight feet from that future property line.
Okay, so we have a potential issue as to how close to that it is, but yet, in reality, that is just a levy?
Well, that would be the edge of the future state-owned property and levy itself.
Now, other than the levy area, we're not concerned about a setback?
Well, setbacks are important, and, you know, from a building code standpoint, it may, you know, change some of the type of construction, you know, that's applied to the building, but this is a future condition. So it's kind of, we're kind of have this either or. I mean, as it exists today, it's nowhere near a property line, but it could be very close to a property line in the future.
Well, coming back to it, I mean, only on the levy side?
Correct.
The other three sides of it?
They're.
You have more than adequate setbacks?
Correct.
I think those are my questions I have at this point. Thank you.
Commissioner Olson?
Thank you. My issues are with 12, 13, and 15. I think that the, I think that the applicant has clearly demonstrated a willingness to cooperate and work with the city and with West Africa here. I would recommend that we reword that to reflect the liquid state of that project, that it's ongoing and it's still basically in its requirements phase, as far as the levees are concerned.
We certainly could rework that. The simplest way we could, we would not object to just striking 12, 13, and 15 completely, if that would be the pleasure of the commission.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to striking them out of the, out of the conditions.
We would certainly admit and recommend striking 12, because it's essentially redundant with 15. But we ought to just obviously make it clear, we put these on there as principally to make, you know, make everyone aware of some of these requirements, but.
Sure.
These will be addressed during the building permit phase.
Well, and David, I think you're covered there with number nine.
Yeah.
With a lot of that. Being that the levy project is still, like I say, in requirements phase, you know, we haven't even touched nine yet. We haven't even, you know, seen the need to invoke that even yet. So I think we're good there.
Can I make a question on one of those? You're striking 13, and I'm not exactly sure why we would strike it. I would recommend modification of 13, if you'd like, to, it has to do with the easement. So, for example, no buildings or structures shall be placed within an existing or planned easement, maybe without prior written consent from that agency. I'm not exactly sure what other easements there might be. That's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what the existing ones are, but I think we're really trying to look at the planned easements there, to make sure that the final product does not end up on the new levy, potentially. That's the goal of 13?
Yeah, this was a condition that did come to us from West Africa last Thursday as we're printing this together, which was prior to the subsequent discussion that Mr. Hart had with West Africa staff, which, you know, we were not part of. However, you know, this is a fairly standard thing, that we typically would not place structures in easements, you know, unless, unless without approval from the, those easement holders.
Right.
And so, you know, this is, you know, not, it's typical for many, all projects, it's not just anything peculiar to this one, per se. So if that one, if you, commission wished to retain that, it's somewhat belt and suspenders, but we would not object to that with modification as suggested by Commissioner Lebig.
Sure. I'm grouping that one together because of the commonalities with the West Africa conditions here, but yeah.
So modification?
If it needs, yeah, sure.
So 13 with more?
And then I had another concern with item 10, or I guess this is kind of a reiteration on what we've already heard. Six months, where are we coming up with that? I mean, we've, we've been talking about this for six months.
Yeah, that was our understanding from West Africa and their schedule to have, you know, the existing Crown facility, you know, relocated. But certainly, if the commission wished to do more time, that would be within the commission's purview.
Well, and I hate to, I hate to refer to email chains and that sort of thing, but we have one here from the applicant that shows that this has already gone on for seven years. So I'm thinking six months is a little tight timeframe-wise.
Can I make a recommendation?
Sure.
Two years, which is, which is typical, and change the caveat to state with extensions permitted based on West Africa's schedule versus the 75% completion.
What would that do, though?
It would allow extensions of pulling the building permit if the levy project isn't moving forward, or if there's something holding up the project as a part of this West Africa project that's outside of Mr. Hart's control. It would allow him to come back and ask for an extension from, I believe, the zoning administrator.
Yeah, and that option is all, is available regardless. So really what we're, really what this boils down to is what's the initial time period the commission is comfortable with.
I also would like to hear from the applicant if he's amenable to that, if that works for his overall project.
Should we come back to it after we've discussed all? Okay.
Yeah, two years is the standard that's in the municipal code for use permits for typical initial approval, so it's only if the commission wanted to do anything really less than that tonight that we, that bears further discussion.
Okay, I was thinking on the side of doing more than that because of the West Africa consideration, but yeah, two years.
There's.
If that's standard, then that's probably what we should, we should do. I think I'm, I think I'm done.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Commissioner Gavlin?
No, I think, I think made substantial progress here. What I've heard, those, we're gonna strike the two, we're gonna modify one, and we're gonna go with what we would normally do with anybody that came before us, and give them two years, so I'm good with all of that.
Commissioner Austin?
Yeah, I, you know, basically second what a lot of my colleagues have been saying about, in regards to condition number 10, and extending it to a two-year term with some of the conditions that we were describing, and we can kind of hash through that in a little bit. One of my concerns, however, is that really one of the purposes when you put conditions of approval on a project that aren't, aren't typical for this, is generally it's an acknowledgement that at this point in the application, the applicant has not completed those items, but staff is generally comfortable that those items will get addressed before building permits are pulled. I still haven't gotten comfortable that the urgency of the applicant is the urgency of the city. From my perspective, my, the urgency of the city is predicated on cellphone cell coverage, which is going to be related to the, the loss of an existing cellphone tower, not within, you know, the jurisdiction of West Africa. And I, I really think that, that item number five really, it can't be a condition of approval. I think that we're deviating. And I'm not, I'm not comfortable that, that we have, that we don't have the commitments that we need. I can appreciate that we can condition, provide a condition of approval that would request that all existing carriers on the, or not, I guess carriers on the existing pole that will be removed, that they're all, you know, reached out to and have an opportunity to work with this person, but with this, with the applicant, but I'm, I'm just not comfortable that we have the commitments. And from my perspective, where I'm sitting now, I would have to table this discussion to the next commission meeting. I don't know that my commissioners share that perspective, but that's my perspective. It's, again, kind of going back to that, that spec perspective. So let me just go down my notes and make sure that I'm going through this. Let's see. So, and again, I'm supportive of, of striking items 12, 13, and 15. To staff's point, it is a belt and suspenders piece, and the reason that we put this in is because I want to make absolutely sure that this project and the applicant are working and getting the easements that, that are required. So, you know, we are talking about setbacks, we are talking about access, but in reality, this is a long process, and we are all acknowledging that, but I don't want to rush into providing a conditional use permit for a project that just isn't ready. That's my perspective. I don't think that this application is complete, predicated mostly on, on having commitments with cellphone carriers. All, all items aside, if we had a proposal for a cellphone tower that doesn't have any commitments, any written commitments at this point, regardless of the fact that, that we all know in the background that a cellphone tower is being removed, I, I wouldn't, under other circumstances, approve the project as it stands. So it sounds like I might be in the minority on that, but that's, that's where I'm leaning. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lebig?
Thank you. I'd agree with Bernadette. Normally, we would not approve a tower if there were no carriers, if there was no need, you don't build a tower. In this case, where I would disagree is that we know there's a tower leaving, and then there's a gap in coverage. The project we're looking at, how I'm balancing it, is a combination between the long-term benefits and cost and the short-term issues, mostly related to construction in the interim process where we're constructing a levy. The other angle I'm looking at this from is the impact on the neighbors. That is one of my highest, highest concerns, and this project does have a setback of at least 100 feet from the tower to the nearest residential line, and that is favorable, in my opinion. I do have a few comments, and then I've been taking notes on the conditions, and hopefully we can go through those to make sure that maybe we have a collective voice before we potentially ask the applicant any questions. I have a question for Kathy. In the staff report, on page three, not to beat this property and access thing to death, but I just, I don't understand why in the staff report, the, there's a statement that West, West Africa, it's the bottom paragraph on page three, that West Africa has to purchase private property to allow for access to the site prior to construction. I don't see that as being needed.
Well, the, the way the police plans are presented, it shows that access would be provided to the site through the future O and M corridor. So West Africa does not own that property presently. So if access were to be provided to the site through the O and M corridor, that acts, that needs to be acquired.
Correct.
And so unless access will come some other way that does not require an off-site acquisition, but we're, you know, that's the way the project has been proposed, is that it would ultimately be served through the O and M corridor. So if that's how the project is proposed, that is an off-site presently. And thus, that acts, that would need to be, that, those rights would need to be acquired, either by Mr. Hart or by West Africa.
And they would be acquired prior to construction. I guess the clarification I wanted was, Mr. Hart does not need West Africa to purchase that property prior to levy construction? Or they wouldn't, because the, there wouldn't be a change in the road?
Well, that would need to be available prior to the, the initial access being removed. So it, it still remains somewhat of a timing, you know, question to us, as to how all that will play out.
But assuming that land would all be acquired at the same time?
It's, it's unknown if West Africa will acquire everything all in one fell swoop, or, you know, because they have to negotiate with individual property owners, some they may which, reach agreements with, some they may have to go to a condemnation procedure on. It's unknown at this time as to which will be which.
Okay. Thank you. On conditions. Sorry, I need to make, I have to find the page again. Here we go. So I heard, I heard comments so far, I don't want to get ahead of you.
No, go ahead.
I heard comments so far on 5, 10, 12, 13, 15, and 16. It's not normal that we revise so many, but I did have comments on these as well. So for, for number five, which is pertaining to the, the written commitments from all carriers presently located on the Linden Road Tower, as soon as that was stated, that caught my attention, because we know that one, one is potentially dropping off as the company's merging, and that could essentially just kill the project right there. I think a standard written commitment from at least one carrier would be appropriate.
I want to go back to one of the comments that I was making earlier, in that I would be more comfortable, rather than requiring a written commitment from all carriers, that it would require demonstration that all carriers have been, you know, that correspondence has happened between all characters, carriers, I don't know that they necessarily need to have all the commitments. Again, I might be in the minority here, but we'll just throw that piece out there.
Well, going back to the policy, though, on that, we were kind of writing that with new towers in mind, not for towers that are being moved down the road like this one, okay? And the goal of that was just to make sure that they knew that they had to co-locate, if you're gonna build a new tower someplace. And so, I mean, it, as far as number five goes, I mean, it, like I said, it's, I mean, it's not really a new tower. And, yeah, Russ, you kind of brought that up, too. You know, that's, I mean, we're kind of a replacement tower for what's gonna go away, so I would bear that in mind for number five. I mean, it might, you know, we already know that it's a, it's, it's gonna be a co-located type of facility, because it already exists.
For clarification, it's described as a co-location tower, correct?
Yeah, that is the proposal, but at this stage, you know, we have no, no guarantee that there'll be, there will be more than one on it. And the commission has previously stated how they do not favor having two over here, which is within the realm of possibility. So it's why we are, we are at, at a condition number five to go a little further than what's in the basic requirements of the wireless policy, since we are dealing with this replacement scenario, so that any carriers on the existing tower that desire to remain in this area, you know, would commit to going on this facility before it was built. And we would, and so that's where this emanated from, because, you know, two towers over in this area did not seem to be favorable to anyone, based on our privacy, previous discussions.
Can't you change that requirement, though, David, from all carriers? Because neither site could provide all carriers if that's true, that one's not going to come on. So couldn't you make it that they have to be a co-located site?
Yeah, we do need to clean, we do need to clean this up, because it's conceivable that all, not all of the carriers on the existing facility will want to move, and we sort of.
That's the point that I'm trying to make.
We sort of assume that they will, but some of them may decide they don't want to.
Unless it's on the other side of the, the river.
They could move to another facility somewhere else theoretically.
Bernadette, remember, in case you forgot, the, the people told us that the only reason we want a tower out there is not to service West Sacramento, it's to service I-5. I mean, me personally, I think they should be over in Land Park, but, you know, Land Park's having trouble getting a cell tower in the middle of Land Park. But that's my belief, so I mean, that's what we've been told, we're gonna service I-5, and that's over in Sacramento. But, you know, I was, I just wanted to make that comment, because you had said something about, you know, why are we doing this? Well, that's one of the reasons. That's the gap in coverage. But I think we, we have to be a little concerned that we not have a thing that says all of them have to come, if in fact, that's not possible, David, so.
Yeah, so I, we, we can clean this up a little bit to get to where, I think where the commission, you know, wants to be.
Just, should a carrier opt out?
Should we come back to this one? I, I think we're leaning towards the co-locatable tower.
Should be a co-located tower, not just one carrier.
And I'm comfortable with including a demonstration that the other carriers from the Linden Road Tower have been contacted.
That's, that's, yeah, that's all I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to soften the line.
If we could craft that, and of course, I don't want to.
Our, our wireless policy requires a little more than. Our, our wireless policy requires a little more than, you know, a demonstration. It actually does require a commitment, you know, prior to building permits. So I had, I had thought that we would clean this up a little bit to most, refer to carriers that are presently, you know, that are presently on the current tower that intend to relocate to the proposed tower. We would want those written commitments prior to building permits. So that way, if anybody that's on the current tower just wants to disappear or go somewhere else, you know, they can, and this project's not held up, you know, because of that.
Yeah, that, that captures what I'm trying to get at.
Everybody, head nods. I see, I see. Yes.
Yes.
I'm okay with that. The next one I heard was number 10, which has to do with the, the timeline and the six months, and I, I'd say that actually caught my attention as well. I think two years with extensions permitted. And I don't know if I'm right on this, but I would say, based on the West Africa project's schedule.
Yeah, we, we could employ our typical condition here, the two years and with the time extensions by the zone administrator, if he so choose.
Okay. Head nods. It looks like we lost some people. Okay.
Well, currently, it says the community development director may extend it. Well, that, yeah, this, what, there's two things going on here. One is the building permit side of it, and then the other one is the time period on the use permit itself. So what we're referring to on the two years is the use permit, you know, and it, and its potential expiration.
12, I have as being stricken completely, as it mostly repeats what's also in 15. 13, I captured a modification. It currently says, no buildings or structures shall be placed within an existing or planned easement. Sorry, within, yeah, an existing or planned easement. And I think we wanted to add, without written permission from.
Yeah, we would say, we would say easement holder.
The easement holder, thank you.
Written.
Written, yes, without written permission from the easement.
Yeah, the applicant has asked that that would be, I must have approved in writing by the easement.
15, I, I'm actually not sure where we are. I heard stricken, and I actually mentioned revise. And 15 has to do with the access agreements for the access road. Provision for access power, telephone improvements shall be included to the satisfaction of the city of Westac and West Africa provisions for. So are we strike, was the request to strike the whole thing? Absolutely.
Okay, David, you ready?
Yes. Turn this off. Because, you know, we kind of talked for a minute, and I don't know what you want to do with this, whether you want to strike or you want to modify it, but we talked a little bit about they're going to reduce, you're not gonna have traffic on South River Road at some point in time, a year from now, 10 years from now, whatever. But that's part of the levy project, it'll become more of a bike path thing. And then we talked about the fact that we still have to provide access somehow to the yacht club. And I saw that this says it has to come from Linden Road. They actually may have an alternative site that they could come into this property at. I know they have to provide access, but it may come, you know, from that site on Linden, or from the yacht club that they have to provide.
Yeah, they will provide some, some loop access to the, access to two yacht clubs from Village Parkway, ultimately, since those are, those remain in place. I guess what you're stating, you know, may be possible, we've been sort of operating based on the plans that have been presented, you know, to us. And that there would utilize the O and M corridor to go into Linden Road, and those other options aren't part of these plans, so we haven't evaluated those.
I know, and I was just, I, Linden Road was just the, the comment point, you know, that you could, you have to provide access, but it may not necessarily have to come off Linden Road.
If there are other alternatives that they may be out there, they haven't been evaluated, and, you know, they're not part of the project description, or what was considered in the environmental document. So we're sort of within sort of those bounds of how the project has been described. So it's, the simple way, if the commission is, is amenable to it, is we can strike 15 in.
I, I'm fine with striking it. I was, I was just making the comment that we'd heard before about that there may be alternative sites, and if you strike it, it really doesn't matter. If you strike out Linden Road and revise it a little bit, you could do that, but, you know, it's not necessary to keep 15 in there, I don't think.
Any other comments? Head nodding, okay, 15, strike.
Okay, forget my comment.
16, there was a request to add the words "and cost," so add. Where it says responsibility and cost of the applicant. Underground, miss, I'm sorry, to be clear, Mr. Hart, the utility undergrounding shall be the responsibility and cost of the applicant. I had one additional condition.
Of course you did.
I, I know the, the focus has been on distance to property lines and access and power and sewer and trees. One of our standard conditions is just that the monopine be in good condition, and if it's not maintained in good condition, that they lose their CUP. Can we incorporate that? And honestly, the, the example for this is the existing monopine.
Yes, one of the mitigation measures in the project environmental document discusses how the maintenance plan and schedule for that, to address that, so we believe that's covered by virtue of the requirement to comply with the mitigation monitoring plan.
Okay, thank you. For completeness, I'm, I would like to maybe address a couple of the comments, just to make sure that we're on the record for, for some things. It is true that we would be approving a CUP for this at a lot size that is less than one acre. However, we are not adjusting a lot line in this, in this CUP. The lot line adjustment is part of the West Africa project. Am I correct on this?
Well, West Africa would not necessarily have to comply with all the map back requirements as a public entity. And so it's, it's conceivable we may be left with a substandard parcel here, and which is not atypical in, in Southport.
Okay. Another comment that was made was regarding the coverage maps. And though I do appreciate that they were included, neither set of the provided coverage maps were for the proposed project. So they were for the existing towers provided by the cellphone companies. Typically, again, this is not something that we would accept. But in this case, we're moving a cellphone tower a few hundred feet, and one could reasonably assume that the coverage map would be about the same, absent any tall buildings or mountains that might be in the way, which there aren't any there, so. That was just my, my comment on that one. Actually, with that, I'm actually, I'm supportive of the design of the barn and the monopine, and can move forward with this. Except you have comments, and you wanted to bring him back up.
Right. Mr. Hart, can you please come back up? I will draw you up in the public.
After all that, I got just, just one question. Number five, I was a little confused. I, I liked your plan of, of reaching out to them and showing evidence of that, but I'd, I'd like it to be the policy of one carrier. I'll do my best. I've already reached out, I've already, the emails, actually, they have copies of the emails from Verizon and T-Mobile. So I have no problem reaching out to them, doing, doing my best, and I'll show evidence of that, multiple evidence of that. But I, I would still like it to be the policy of one carrier to get that building permit.
David, could you read the language? Because I don't, I was under the impression we weren't requiring any carriers, are we required?
Written commitments from all the carriers. That was, that was actually my concern, I'm not sure that any.
The new, the revised version. We, we recognize that some of them may not want to go.
Actually, the policy says a signed letter of intent, not a commitment. So the difference there would be, if you guys are gonna build a cell tower, we would like to locate there. If you're not, well, then we're not going to. Well, yeah, when the last big one we. He doesn't need a signed contract from AT&amp;T or whoever to build this. He said, he needs interest from a cell company. Yeah, they're, yeah, when they do these, yeah, there's kind of a chicken and the egg thing a little bit on these. When the last big one that came through, which was the water tank one down on Jefferson, you know, they, that tower developer came here with an AT&amp;T person and a Verizon person in tow, and they both said that, you know, if you build this, we will go on it. They obviously could not sign a deal to, on it until that new facility was built, and, but they had those commitments in terms of letter intent. And that's why this language was written in this, in the policy in particular, because of that chicken and the egg situation. So we, we're looking for those to comply with this policy, which means that any carriers, the key here is that we don't just build a tower and it just sit up there with nobody on it, you know, for, for some indefinite period of time. We want to have carriers to go on the tower before the tower gets built.
I, well, I would be a fool to, to build without a commitment, so. I mean, I, I just would like it to, you know, stick with the policy that I show a commitment or, you know, whatever the requirement is in the policy before the building permit. And then, and then I will show proof, and under this particular circumstance, that I have reached out to all of three of the existing carriers, or four, if, you know, whatever there are. And, and I'll show proof of that over and over again. I, I want them, believe me, I'm gonna do everything I can. It's, it's just not, not in my control. So I would really like it just to, like Miss Austin was saying, you know, show proof of reaching out, but ultimately, it's, it's the policy that takes effect.
So we could, we could like loosen up that language instead of written commitment, we could say something else? Does everybody sound, does that sound okay?
I mean, what do they have, what is it actually written in the policy that you show?
Chair pres, if I, if I can explain a little bit, so, as was described earlier, and, and based on what I'm hearing today, the policy requires a written commitment from at least one carrier for new towers. As we explained, this isn't your typical new tower, this is a replacement tower. So we're operating under somewhat unique circumstances. What I thought I heard from the commission, and if this is not the wish of the commission, then we'll go ahead and change the language, but is the requirement that condition of approval number five requires prior to the issuance of a building permit, that the applicant present to the city written commitments from all of the carriers presently located on the Linden Road Tower which wish to relocate to a new tower in the area. And the purpose of that was to protect the applicant in the event that there's a carrier who no longer wishes to be in the area from holding this project hostage or, or bringing it to its demise. On the other hand, it achieves the city's purpose of ensuring that aesthetic impacts are reduced to the minimum by not having more than one tower.
So in, in layman's terms, Mr. Hart would need to present letters, letters from the carriers expressing whether or not they wish to relocate to the tower.
Right, so, so the commitment letters would basically say, if this tower is built, I commit to locating on this tower. And it would only be required, again, based on the language that I've read into the record, from those carriers who wish to actually relocate. If a carrier is merging with another one and it's no longer in existence, certainly, that's no longer required. If a carrier no longer wishes to remain in the area because they don't believe they have an adequate customer base, that would not apply. But for all of the other ones, it would apply, and again, the purpose would be so that we don't have two carriers on one tower and two on another, for example.
My, my concern is that the condition that all of the carriers that wish to relocate or co-locate provide a written commitment exceeds the scope of the policy. The policy dictates that only one commitment is required. If you want to change the policy, not, now is not the time to do that. You have to go through the, the formal processes you've done with other issues related to this project. I, I believe the applicant, Mr. Hart, has no problem with complying with the policy and going forward that route. If, if he can't get one, then his CUP is not gonna go forward, but the policy is what the policy is.
Well, and typically, we see that letter now. There's, there's the catch, is we're, we're including this to potentially allow this project to go forward without a commitment left.
What's funny now is what would I get in an email is they're waiting, I get an email from them saying they're waiting for you.
Yeah, I don't know if we can say typically, we see that now, because we've only done this co-location thing one time before this. I mean.
More, more than that, right?
Yeah, more than. According to this policy, right? That's been the policy for a long time.
And from a market perspective, too, I mean, if they know that I have to have all three of them, it makes it really a lot harder to, to negotiate if I don't get, they, they know this. So, I mean, I, I think if we, if we stick with the reaching out, and then I show evidence of that, and, and that, you know, I, I, I show the commitment from at least one, it allows me the flexibility. I'm not, I'm not hamstrung by, you know, the last guy, oh, you don't, you don't get me, you can't build it, you know? I mean, it's not a good position to be in.
And I, I'd just like to add that, I understand what, what you're saying, Commissioner, but the language is prior to the issuance of a building permit. So that could be a condition, that prior to the issuance of a building permit, you get one. But as far as this approval of the CUP, I don't think that's within the bounds of the policy.
The, the policy does restrict approval of another tower within so many feet of an existing tower that has space on it. So to stay in line with the policy, I, I guess I would be okay with saying written requirements from one. I wouldn't even necessarily require it to be one of the existing, but then demonstrated.
But all have been reached out to.
Yes.
I, I have no problem with that.
Mona, is that okay?
It's based on the wishes of the commission.
That sounds good.
Is that our policy?
Our policy is.
We just had, if we just had somebody walking in the door, is that our policy, they have to have one?
We need to sign a letter of intent before a building permit from at least one, at least one co-location. What's, what's.
The facility has to be a co-located facility, though.
Yeah, what's also sort of peculiar we have about this scenario compared to all the other ones we have done is that we have never had two being proposed essentially right next door to each other at the same time. And so it's, it's up to the commission that if this particular project were approved and the building permit issued with commitment from only one co-location, that leaves the door open for potentially a second tower to be built with two or three other carriers on it. And so it's really the, up to the commission to, how much concern they have about the potential for two towers to be built, you know, essentially right next door to each other, because it is conceivable that that could happen.
And that's not what we want to see.
That's what the commission has stated previously, you know, that did not want to see two over here.
Yeah, I don't want to see two towers side by side.
You, you wouldn't see one unless they're, unless the first tower that is approved and constructed is full and has, let's see, how does it say? Wireless telecommunication facility is located within 1,000 feet of an existing monopole or tower-mounted wireless communications facility with no co-location capacity or within 1,500 feet of an existing wireless telecommunication facility with co-location, co-location capacity still available. I guess it, well, we'd come back to the commission, and we could approve or den. I guess it would come back to the commission, and we could approve or deny based on that. And the two projects do fall within 1,000 feet of each other.
So before we go to a vote, I just wanted to weigh in on one other thing. Again, it's my intention to not vote in support of this particular proposal, but I did want to put some, weigh in on the conditions of approval. One of the reasons that I'm not, I'm planning to not vote in support of this is because I want to make sure that the conditions of appro, I don't see that this project is really as ready as I would like it to be. I would like easements is a big one, and the commitments is another big one. Here's what I foresee potentially happening. I do think that you need more time to develop this, which is why I was supportive of the two-year period of time. However, let's say that within, you know, 18, 20 months from now, the development isn't happening. The easements aren't getting addressed, there's an issue with the arborist, you know, whatever, anything could happen with these different conditions of approval, and it's, it seems as if the conditions of approval are not going to be met within time, that the project will not be 75% under construction by the 24-month period. I could see that potentially happening. In that case, if we have an alternative proposal before us, I don't want to be in the same situation where we have conditions of approval where there's so many gray boxes. I want, I want it to look like we are, we are providing a conditional use permit for a project that is really going to move forward, that a tower is being constructed with at least letters of intent, multiple ones, that is going to meet all of the carriers. At this point, the reason I have an issue is if you don't have the commitments, I'm not sure that you're going to be able to get the carriers to buy on to this, to the design and the height and whatever other parameters they're looking at. So if we are faced with an alternative proposal, let's say 24 months from now, I want our conditions of approval to be a little less gray, and, you know, I want there to be an arborist report, I want there to be easements, I want there to be a little, I want it to be a little bit more robust where we don't have any conditions that the project has these conditions before we approve a conditions of approval. So those, that's just my two cents on how I see us proceeding forward.
Under that scenario, though, you wouldn't need the tower to be torn down. So there wouldn't be any need to have it built that quick. If the project stalled that bad, then the existing tower wouldn't need to come down, so you wouldn't have a gap in coverage. And we don't have any trees at all. I mean, so, I mean, it, just.
If we face the situation again, I want there, I don't want as many conditions of approval. That's, that's all I'm saying, whether it's your project or an alternative project.
I know.
So that's my piece.
David, is there some alternative text for condition number five?
Oh, yeah, I believe Ms. Ibrahimee had some draft language for that, and have we, by the way, have we closed the public hearing at this stage, or are we keeping that open at this time?
It was closed, and I thought reopened.
We closed it, and it was reopened when we brought Mr. Hart back up with questions.
Okay, well, I have heard two different requests for condition of approval number five. The first one is, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall present to the city written commitments from at least one carrier. The second one is the one that I previously read into the record, which provides, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall present to the city written commitments from all of the carriers presently located on the Linden Road Tower which wish to relocate and co-locate on the proposed tower.
Wish to as opposed to will be co-locating?
Yes.
The second is still my preference, but I would go with the first one if the commission so desires with the addition of Bernadette's clause that the existing carriers be notified and contacted.
I think the uniqueness of this project warrants the first one.
The other commissioners agree?
Chair Perez, may I recommend that the public hearing portion be closed before further deliberations take place?
Thank you. I'll now close the public hearing again.
I mean, I understand what everybody's saying here, but I still think you have to have multiple carriers on a site. Multiple could be two, but you got to have, you know, just to put a cell tower up, first off, I don't even know if you can afford to put a cell tower up for just one carrier. But, you know, I mean, I think you got to have multiple carriers, be it one or two or three. But then my dilemma comes back to the fact that our, what we state is you can only have to have one. That's my dilemma, is that's what we say in our, in our zone text, and yet, we're trying to put multiple on there. Whether you get all three or four, I don't think, you know, that's making it very difficult.
Right, and I agree with that point exactly.
Oh, and I agree with that point as well, which is why I'm leaning towards number two.
I don't know if you have to have three, but you got to have multiple, multiple being two at least to go on this site. That doesn't seem unreasonable to me.
Comments?
But I could go with just the one if that's the majority. I mean, I just don't know, but it just seems like you're trying not to have two cell sites side by side. And no matter which one, I mean, if they have a commitment from three, you know, if one site goes, I got all three, and they're committed, that's fine. But then the other one has none, and he's not going to build if he has none. Or if you have one, or if you have one on both sites, just doesn't seem right.
But if it's already policy that a second cell tower can't be within 1,000 feet?
That makes it more.
1,000 to 1,500 feet, depending on if there's room on the existing cell tower or not room on it, then we're not going to have that problem of having a side by side.
Unless they can demonstrate a coverage gap, then our policy's out the door again.
Well, the policy, the policy's one. We've talked, we've had different issues before us where we, although have, may have not liked the policy, I've heard Commissioner Moore say, that's the policy.
I've probably said that.
And I'm thinking of the sign issue.
Sounds like something I could say.
And I think it's a reasonable assumption that it's going to be a co-located tower. I mean, I know we can't say that today. I know we don't have a written agreement, but those carriers are going to go somewhere. So, and I think a couple people have raised the point that we do have, we are not locked into approving a cell tower unless there's a gap, gap in coverage, and with an approval, there won't be a gap in coverage. So there's some discussion there at some point. I think we've all agreed on the amendments to the, to the conditions. I think we all agree that it should be a two-year timeframe, and I think we all agree that we'll have the ability to look to see if there's another tower is appropriate for us, or if it's not, and we'll have the leeway to say yes or no to that tower. So I think all of our questions have been answered, unless I'm missing something.
For the recap now?
Sure.
So I would like to entertain a motion with the change in requirements that we've given to staff.
Okay, I might be able to pull it, pull it together.
Pull it off?
Yeah.
Can I show everything?
Okay. I move that we determine the mitigated negative declaration is the appropriate level of environmental review, that the required findings for the granting of a conditional use permit can be made for this request, and that the applicant, that the applicant must comply with the proposed conditions as identified in the, as identified in the staff report, with modifications to conditions five, 10, 12, 13, 15, and 16. Number five being a change to include at least one carrier committed to the tower with written demonstration that the existing, that all existing carriers on the Linden Road Tower have been notified. For condition number 10, a change to a two-year period with extensions permitted per the zoning administrator. This, a complete strike of condition number 12. Modification of condition number 13 to include at the end of it without written permission from the easement holder. Complete strike of number 15. A modification of condition number 16 to add the responsibility and cost of undergrounding, sorry, responsibility and cost of the applicant. That's all of the modifications I have.
Second?
What about mitigation?
I'm sorry, what?
Bernadette, would you want to say something?
Item four, approving the mitigation monitoring plan. You just made a motion, right? I just want to make sure that the last piece got it.
Nope, I read the wrong part. Okay, I'm going to go back to this.
You know, on the undergrounding, though, Russ, I made the comment, and they said it may be necessary to underground, but all that is residential out there, and it may be okay to bring it in if necessary, you know, the cost should be done by the applicant if needed or if necessary, because it may or not, may not be necessary to underground in a rural area. And that's all I was making the comment.
Yeah, it's not required. It just says, any utility undergrounding shall be the responsibility of the applicant.
Any required utility undergrounding?
I don't know if that's even.
I, you might defer to David, but I mean, my, my comment was, if it's needed, yes, he's got to do it, and he's got to.
For the most part, yes.
I have to read. Okay, I'm going to.
That's okay.
I'm going to recommend staff, I'm moving staff recommendation with the conditions as, as read.
Previously read.
As previously read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a roll call vote, please.
Okay, roll call vote.
Commissioner Olson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Guerrero?
Aye.
Commissioner Leibig?
Aye.
Commissioner Galvan?
Aye.
Commissioner Austin?
Nay.
And Chairperson Perez?
Yes. Thank you.
Any interested party may appeal the decision to planning commissioners matter to the city council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 15 days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you. Do I have any informal discussion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, I'll second that. Meeting adjourned, thank you.
Everyone seconded that.